Everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary King, please take the roll call.
Ms. Cherry?
Present.
Dr. Connors?
Here.
Mrs. Cordino?
Here.
Mr. King? Ms. Rashid?
Here.
Ms. Rivers? Mrs. Salgado-Cowen?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stafford?
Here.
We have eight present.
Thank you. Hereby it be known that the Piscataway Township Board of Education has complied with the notification requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act for the announcement of this meeting date and place on April the nineteenth, twenty twenty four in the following manner: posting of the public notice on the posting board for the Board of Education in the administration building, email notification to the newspaper's serve of Piscataway, The Home News Tribune and the Courier-News, email notification filed with the municipal clerk at the municipal building on Hose Lane. This meeting is being videotaped. This recording is not an official record or supplement to the minutes. It is intended only as a source of information that public might utilize at a later date to familiarize themselves with the Board's activities. Executive session. Be it resolved that the Board adjourns to executive session for the purpose of the review and discussions of the personnel agenda, litigation, H.I.P. monthly reports, and other matters pursuant to law NJS A ten dash four, ten semicolon four dash twelve B. Can I have a motion?
Remove.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.
All.
I don't know what that was.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
We are back in session, public session. Um, we have now reconvened. First, I want to welcome our new student representative, Mr. Tyler West. Congratulations. And now that I've did your introduction, you guys are first on the list on the agenda. So, student reports from the representatives from our junior and senior.
Thank you. Um, first of all, it's so good to be back. Um, I have some big shoes to fill, but it's kind of crazy that I was sitting here one year ago. Um, but I hope you all had a great summer and, um, I'm so happy, like I said, to be here. Um, to just get started, all the clubs are starting up on Monday, which is super exciting. Um, for example, National Honor, um, National English Honor Society, all the National Honor Societies are currently accepting applications. Um, so that's been going on. I know student council is having their meeting next week, a lot of elections, a lot of officer meetings, all that. Um, I know Student Government Association is starting up their pep rally and conversations about that and Spirit Week, a lot of school spirit. Um, sports are going on, so there's a lot of festivities. Um, as a senior, there's been a lot of college planning, so many visits. Um, the counselors have been doing such a good job communicating with us and making sure we know all of our information, um, as well as like writing our essays. The Writing Center has opened up, which is a great resource for all of us. Um, as well as, I know last year, the cafeteria, we signed a new contract, so there's been free breakfast in the morning, which has been really good. I know a lot of the students like that and I know they're enjoying the menu, so I've heard very positive things. Um, I guess that kind of concludes my report. There's just a lot of new things starting up.
Hi, Harul, I'm Tyler. Uh, nice to meet you all, I want to say thank you and I'm grateful for this and I'm very excited to be here. Um, so just to start off for me, uh, over the summer, the AP Institute took place and there was a lot of classes going on and I actually took place in it. I did AP African American Experience and then I did AP Language and Composition and that went really good. It so far helped me this year with classes and like seeing what the work was going to be like and all of that, so that work was really good. To start the year, as you said, our sports teams have been doing very good just for a little bit. Um, our board soccer team is actually three and O right now and their senior night is currently going on in the University of Colonia, so hopefully they can make that four and O. And then our football team actually started the season pretty well also. They're currently one and one and then they go face Old Bridge tomorrow and hopefully they can make it two and one. Um, in school, uh, there's been a lot of new faces around and a lot of those new faces have been security guards. They've upped the security a lot this school year. There's been one, you can't really walk around without seeing one of these. And, um, they've also had a new ID policy, so every first period, your teacher asks you if you have your ID and if you don't, you go get a temporary ID. And they also ask you third period and if you lost, you have to get another temporary ID. So they're being very critical on that this year and it's been very helpful to us. And then as far as classes go, this is the first year the African American Studies is an official class in the school. They've done a trial couple, the last couple of years and the students have seemed to enjoy it. There's been a lot of students in it and they're continuing to enjoy it this year, so that's been great. And many of our French students are excited because in the next coming weeks, they're having an interest meeting for them to go to Quebec in February of this year to, you know, sightsee, learn a bunch of new things. So our excelling French students are gearing up for that and, um, that's pretty much it. So we're just hoping for another great year. Last year was great, started off to a good year, so again, I'm just grateful for you guys having me here, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a couple of comments based on what you had said, Tyler. I'm glad you brought a couple of things up. First of all, it's really nice to hear you say that you can't walk anywhere without seeing a yellow shirt or a security guard because we really take that very seriously and we put a lot of resources, uh, the people around this table put a lot of resources into, into safety and security. So I appreciate, you know, you bringing that up and the IDs, uh, things like that, that's great. And the AP Institutes, just so everybody understands, uh, they are classes over the summer. If Tyler's taking AP African American Studies, um, he'll have a week or two weeks over the summer where they'll actually begin that course. And one of the reasons we do that is because the AP testing dates are the same for the entire country. And many countries, many states begin their classes, begin their school year in August. So we wouldn't want to put our kids at a disadvantage at that test by us beginning in September because that's when our school year begins in New Jersey. So that's one of the main reasons. And the second one is to make sure they, before they enter the AP year, the school year, they can really see and get immersed a little bit on, uh, in the class to see the pace, to see what's going on, to see if they really like it. And there is an opportunity for them to change out if they, if they don't want that. So I appreciate, uh, that as well, so thanks.
And I did see as far as French, um, I happen to be on the School G page, that they're offering it to students, so even if they don't have French this year, the opportunity, if they took it in the past, like, to like French too, it's open. So I, I think that's really important because a lot of students haven't had that opportunity for trips. So to include kids who for whatever reason wouldn't take it, it's still an opportunity for them to have that experience, so I think that's really great.
My pleasure.
Yes, um, I just wanted the, um, student, new student representative, if you could give us some kind of feedback and so people at home will know as well because we're videotaping to YouTube high. Um, what is, uh, what is the process of a student that would apply for your position?
So for me at least, you know, you learn about the position. They posted on School G actually for a junior representative. And for me, it was just, I saw it and then, you know, conversations with my parents and then like how this school year would go, see if I could do it and then, you know, you apply. They give you, and then you have to send a video recording on why you should be a candidate and what you think of the position and what you think the position entails. and what you think of the position and what you think the position entails, all of that stuff. And you go in. I had a meeting with the principal, the vice principal, one of the teachers. So they asked me a bunch of different questions, gave me different scenarios on what I would do. And yeah, I sucked that in. I did my interview and then I just had to wait and hopefully I got that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations and as every meeting, we know, I know it's the beginning of the year, but we know you're really busy, so you're free to leave after this point at any point. And we really appreciate you being here. If you drive, please drive safely. And again, thanks a lot for taking on this, Tombe. Thank you for coming back and really, we're impressed with the things you do over the summer, so I know we're impressed, we're going to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, if you could just hang out for two more minutes until after I give my report, then I'm going to tell you to go home because you're singing, you have things to do.
You guys know when the Super Chief Band Festival is?
Yeah, it's in October sometime.
October fifth.
Thank you. For my president's report for September 12th, 2024. Our 2024-2025 school year is off to an excellent start. Teachers and students are settling back into their classroom routines, ready to get to work and tackle the challenges to make this a successful year. We start our back to school nights next week where parents will learn firsthand about their students' daily experiences. You will get to meet their teachers, see their classrooms, learn their schedules and more. We urge all the parents to attend so you can learn all you can about your child's school life and help them start out the year strong. Our Board of Education members look forward to meeting and speaking with many, as many families as we can at back to school night. Tombe, thank you to our senior student representative to the Board, Tombe Nabeel, for bringing attention to an issue that has brought great harm to our community and to communities nationwide. I was proud to be present along with fellow board members and representatives of our administration when Tombe unveiled a memorial to victims of drug overdose. She planted purple and white flags near Newmarket Pond to represent 45 people who had died in Piscataway in the past five years and more than 200 people who had overdosed in that time. We are very proud that Tombe chose to use her Gold Award project, the most prestigious award in Girl Scouts, to raise awareness to this horrible reality. I have no doubt that only good can come from this effort to help those struggling with drug addiction and other mental health issues.
Thank you.
I thank you for the invitation. I thank you for being who you are. To be the Board Representative, to be your Girl Scout Service Unit Manager, to watch all that you have done and the growth that you have taken and all the ambition you have, I'm amazed. But most importantly, I know you do it from your heart and you're doing it to always make a difference in your community. And for that, we, the Board of Education, thank you as a superb representative of Piscataway High School's school system.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now that we've gotten to acknowledge you and thank you, now if you want to go home, please do so. And I'll see you tomorrow morning in the parking lot.
I will.
Tom, the band festival is October 5th. Saturday.
Saturday, October 5th?
Yes. Next on the year agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I would be remiss if we didn't, if I didn't ask for a moment of silence for the anniversary of nine eleven yesterday. Many brave people were lost in an evil act and even though it was 23 years ago, it still hurts just as it happened yesterday. And families, especially one family that works at the high school, Jim Knox, our prayers go out to him and his family. He lost his brother in nine eleven, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Lighter note, as always, please check out our superintendent's report, the first one of the year on our website, Superintendent's Corner. Highlights this month include the start of the school year activities, summer things, some summer work, getting ready by our, by our CNI team and our teachers, things like that. Some student awards and successes even over the summer, including Tombe's little article is, is in the superintendent's report. And we're really, really proud of everything that we do here, so please get a chance to check that out. I do want to read a little bit of a snippet from one of the articles in here because it's really impressive. Former Piscataway school teacher and coach Joe Kinyani chosen this year's winner for Life Award recipient from the Dr. John F. Bateman Foundation. Kinyani was a science teacher at PHS for 46 years and a football coach for 38 years. In 13 years as head coach of the Chiefs, he had an impressive 88, 43 and two record, including an undefeated season and Central Jersey Group Four Championship in 2002. He's an inductee to the NJ Scholastic Coaches Association Hall of Fame and the New Jersey Football Coaches Association Hall of Fame. With this award, he won a $5,000 prize and he happily donated it back to our program. So we really are, are proud of our, of our teachers and alumni, whether they're here still in school with us or not. So I also want to reiterate Ms. Cherry's comments about the start of the school year, very smooth. We really appreciate all the work by our teachers, by our custodial maintenance department, by our administrators. We really have, have had a smooth opening and really happy about that. So looking forward to a wonderful school year and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Nabeel. Next on the list, Personnel and Labor Relations, Nancy Salgato-Cowan.
Okay, be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through A to be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Secretary, if you can take the roll call.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgato-Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Committee reports, we have one committee report. Dr. Connors?
Fiscal Plans and Operations Committee met on September 4th to discuss audits, bid projects, capital projects and more. On the audits, food service excess cash in August, the district was notified by the New Jersey Department of Agriculture that June 30th, 2023 food service fund balance was in excess of federal regulations. The district submitted a corrective action plan showing that the concern had been rectified by December 2023. Pensions and benefits census review, the district was notified that it was selected for census review as part of the New Jersey Division of Pensions and Benefits implementation of GASB 67. I think that stands for government accountability, something.
Accounting Standards Board.
Standards Board. Census selections occur on a 10-year rotation and this is not an audit of the district. Annual audit interim testing was conducted during the summer. Year-end field work will continue through September 20th. Bid projects, kitchen serving line equipment. Denver Equipment Company of Charlotte completed installation of serving lines at Grand View in Quibbetown. Painting, painting was completed in the Arbor Gymnasium, Kanakamak Cafeteria and Office Area. Grand View Classrooms, MLK Cafeteria and Kitchen and Quibbetown Cafeteria. Kitchen equipment installation, Spiesel Architects completed the bid specifications for a contractor to install kitchen equipment at Piscataway High School. Bid opening will be October 1st, 2024. Facility capital projects, roofing upgrades, partial roof replacements were completed at Knollwood and Randolphville. Paving projects, paving projects were completed at Arbor, Grand View and up to high school. HVAC upgrades, some progress was made over the summer by HNS and Siemens on system control work on the HVAC units, but additional work remains. Piscataway High School dust collection, the project was put out to bid, again with a bid opening scheduled for October 2nd, 2024. Piscataway High School Media Center, Spiesel Architects are in the design phase of the project. Bidding is scheduled to begin on January 10th, 2025. That's one to try and open up some space for the esports, right, area.
Yep, and a remodel of the media center.
And a remodel. Acoustic upgrades, a schematic design meeting was held on August 8th, 2024. Spiesel Architects are working on the bid specifications with bidding scheduled to begin on November 8th, 2024. Energy savings improvement program, Siemens made substantial progress in completing their work over the summer, including some projects that could only be completed when the buildings were empty. Full closeout should be completed by December 31st, 2024. Solar panels, a review by Kop Electric found solar systems at Arbor, Kanakamak, Quibbetown, Randolphville and Shore are aging and require some minor maintenance, but are working as expected. The solar system at Piscataway High School has one inverter that is not functioning and some wiring deficiencies. The committee supported Mr. Olivero's engaging an architect or engineer to explore replacing the Piscataway High School solar system. Business office policies, 7510, use of facilities. Mr. Olivero informed the committee that he provided a memo with recommendations to David Rubin for review by the policy committee. Mr. Olivero discussed the successful transition to master library from school dude. 6,700 investments, Mr. Olivero discussed a proposed change in the policy to include the investment account and the calculation of the average month end balances to better capture all the potential funds for investing and the change was approved by the committee. This is going to result in a, in a lot more returns and it's a great idea. Transportation, the 2024-2025 school year got off to a strong start. Buses arrived at schools mostly on time with a few routes requiring new. Food service, universal free breakfast. Mr. Olivero discussed the messaging to the community by the district and press coverage of the new program. School media and summer EBT application, summer EBT applications is the new term they're using for the free and reduced lunch. Mr. Olivero discussed the requirements of the Working Class Families Act, Hunger Act and the impact on meals application process. That I believe is a state program. All families must either complete an application or actively decline it through the Genesis Parent Module. The district will continue to message the community about the application process. Ad hoc committee on food service debt, the first meeting is scheduled for September 23rd, 2024. New Jersey School Business Legislative Update, Dr. Connors discussed several bills including the NJ SBA School, School Board Notes. In these meetings, we try and make, keep up with what's going on with any state legislation that affects the school. I mean, there was one in there that really doesn't affect us, but it was about electric school buses, I think, some, something, but didn't affect us. Anyway, in accordance with Public Law 2023, C147, menstrual products dispensers were installed in all middle school and high school female restrooms. Business office, investment account, the committee reviewed the interest earned for the 2023-2024 school year, the current balance on the August 2024 NJ ARM, which is a organization that allows school districts to invest funds and then, and on certain interest rates and get returns. All funds remain in the joint account balance and we passed a policy on that and the business administrator is the one that oversees that. All funds remain in the joint account because it's currently yielding more than the long-term investment options. And Madam Chairman, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Any questions?
A quick question. David, the solar panels at the high school that has the, that's not functioning and wired, is that like an installation issue or is it just like equipment that sometimes goes a little wonky that now has to be fixed?
So it's twofold, a little of both. So the inverter is the big mechanical unit that records the energy that's coming in from the solar panels.
And makes it usable.
Makes it usable and then it also makes it able to be read, so we get our SREC for it. We have two of those at the high school, one of them is down. The issue as it relates to that is the solar business is very transient. Companies go in and out of business. It's highly unlikely we can find a replacement for that inverter. And you can't just go plug and play and buy the whirlpool version of an inverter. The other part of the problem specifically with the high school solar system, for some reason, we don't know why, because the high school was done at the same time as several other schools, the wiring that they put wasn't the correct wiring and was not properly encapsulated in all spots. So those two issues combined would be very costly to try and address and there's no guarantee of a perfect solution because of the inverter issue I just described. So we're going to explore other options to remove those panels, perhaps put new ones up. We're going to look at all the options.
So we're looking for the most cost-effective and energy-effective solution. And my second question, I guess, Dave, this is for you. I actually, you know, I know about the menstrual products. Do you know what the date is that schools have to implement? So I'm so happy that these are up and running. Do you know by, like, because that's the New Jersey, right, the, the public law 2023? And I know they, they passed it last year. Do you happen to know?
I don't have it in my head, but I will look it up.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, when the school has to, like, um.
Have it up and running?
Yeah, up and running.
It's for the start, it's for the start of the year.
It was the start of this year. So again, this is really great and makes me so happy because that public law is probably a long time coming.
Yeah, we always have them available in nurses' office, but it.
Yeah, but I'll tell you, every teacher in the middle school, every woman teacher in the middle school, you know, has things for students because not all students feel comfortable going into the nurses' office. So I think this is a really.
It's a good thing.
It's a great way for kids to feel comfortable. But I'm just curious what the.
I'm sorry, the language in the broadcast says, beginning in the 24-25 school year.
So.
We interpret that to mean the beginning of the year.
Not, I got you, okay, so.
But that was, that was the guidance that came from the DOE.
That was my question.
So, you know, sometimes, you know, some districts, there might be shortage in dispensers.
Can you interpret it to mean January or?
Maybe, or there could be a shortage in dispensers, so perhaps there's flexibility there, but yeah, we're happy that we were able to get it for the start of the year.
Again, that's your always forward planning and preparing our district's needs. So he answered, David.
I'm still looking.
The other David to the rescue.
See, zippity-doo over here, gotcha.
Of David's. That's not my iteration.
Okay, next, we're going to have approval minutes. Ms. Rashid, can you do that for us because Loretta's not here?
Sure. Be resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted. Business meeting, August 8th, 2024. Executive session, August 8th, 2024.
Second. All in favor? All right. Next, we have public comments from the floor. I do see people in the comment, in a public section, so I will officially read this. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments in educational issues and school matters of community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comment at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their names and address. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The Board may require that individuals register to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written materials in support of their position. All statements in or questions shall be directed to the presiding officer and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for dignity and privacy rights of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the Board's intention to stifle comments on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation and or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of legal ramifications of their comments, the Board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Can I have a motion to open public session? Motion? Second. Anyone in the public area wishing to speak this evening, please come forward, state your name, your residence and. And the township. I recognize who you are now, okay?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't come with any questions, but I have a question.
What was your name and?
My name is Darmi Patel. I live in Piscataway. You may have seen me at other meetings. My concern is start of the school year, it's just a general question. School year, there was some shooting happen at different staff and I'm seeing some police officers at, at the, at the schools when I go to get my kids. I took a few days off just to make sure things were going well as my son was going to a different school this year. What is district doing, something different this year than before? To assure kids that they're safe and also school can be doing everything in their power, but I think the students needs to be a little bit more educated and also some guidance may be helpful.
So thank you for your question, we appreciate that. And we take safety and security very seriously. You heard me say to our student reps that we're glad. So, you know, you say, what, what have we done specifically this year?
Yeah.
We feel that we're very well equipped and almost on the cutting edge of everything we can do financially here in Piscataway. So aside from really shoring up some of our processes and procedures, we had everything in place last year that we felt comfortable with, so we didn't change much of our processes, which we really can't talk about publicly, right, of our processes, things like that. So what, what we feel very strongly is, is about the education. So we met the summer with the, with the safety officers. We talked to them about new processes. Dr. Lotman stays at the cutting edge with our meetings with the county and state police. They have programs and professional development for new things that they, that they put in place. We have a meeting with the police department every month. We met with them over the summer as well. So we, we feel we stay as, as abreast as we can on, on the safety issues. But what we, what we will be doing and what we do every year is, is you're right, is educating the kids on what to do if they see something, if there's an emergency, things like that. So that's where our drills come in and you'll start to see those drills happening within the first 10 days of school and then September and every month thereafter.
Okay, thank you. The drills, we do get notifications now and we can all see it. It's just when they see something, in what scenario they should say something. And it's not necessarily waiting for a drill to, to happen. And it's going back to educating them of knowing and it, it's just not only of outsiders, there might be something in, in school going on and if there. And, um, if they're, they're going through something and they're not talking, may result into something more than what we think. So it's, it's just something.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I do think that students, um, I've noticed will go to somebody if they, if, if something feels off, or maybe somebody posted something that, um, seemed questionable or they felt uncomfortable with. You know, there definitely have been, you know, students who are bringing that to people's attention. So I think, um, you know, hopefully that that continues where, you know, students will go to someone that they trust and communicate something that, um, they, they felt was inappropriate and made them uncomfortable. So as long as we keep educating our kids.
I just have one more question. So, um, I asked my son that, do you know your counselor? Do you know the counselor at school? And he said he doesn't know. Which is just a couple of weeks, so he probably doesn't know. I know, because I look up stuff on the internet, uh, on the website, I know who his counselor is. But it's just, I'm trying to get information to him if he wants to talk to somebody, who he can go to. Though something maybe could be included in back-to-school night, uh, that parents can always, parents can also talk to, to...
That's a good point.
Students, they say, you always have your counselor available, and I, I talk to my son all the time, so...
And you'd be surprised how many students will come to teachers, former teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians.
Safety officers.
Safety offers, people in the building that they build relationships with, because education's about building relationships. So, um, councils are great, and they are such valuable resources. But there's so many, um, members of our school community that students, I, in my experience in, you know, being a teacher and, um, you know, helping children, that there are people that they, hopefully everybody has someone they feel comfortable going to, and it's not always going to be a counselor. Although that is a good, um, you know, it's a good stepping if you really need something that you want fixed or have a, a major problem. But kids, a lot of times, um, find somebody in the building that they do trust.
They connect with, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I do have, my youngest one is in third grade this year, but he was in Ms. Millory Rogess's class, uh, for, for a year and a half. He was moved to general education in December of last year, but every single day he would go visit her first before he can go to his class.
Yeah, so that's, that's...
He has to go visit her.
Relationships, yeah.
What I, what I can tell you is that every board member here is a liaison to one of the schools. And we often, when, whether it's an award ceremony, whether it's at the Piscataway High School Experience and the ninth graders are coming up, uh, after they just graduated from eighth grade, or whether it's a back-to-school night, it's always said that when you get up to the high school, find somebody that you can talk to, that believes in you, you believe in them, you can trust. And we emphasize about what we're just talking about, having someone, it could be the custodian, it could be the nurse, it could be a cafeteria worker, somebody that you trust, that you can talk to. And we often reiterate that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's just the technological world, you know, now they have everything.
Sure.
Before they go to a person, they have something else available who they want to say or do something before they actually should be talking to an actual person.
Well, thanks for bringing it to attention, because it's important.
Thank you so much.
Um, Chairman, I have an answer to Miss, for your question.
Wait a minute, let's get her on record. Come on.
Not just David's answer.
The law right here, it says, "The act shall take effect in the first full school year following the date of an act," which sounds like exactly what Mr. O'Callaghan said.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Thank you so much for the research. Anyone else, public comments? If not, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Public comments is closed. Disco Planet and Operations, Dr. Connors?
Be resolved, following motions identified as items A through H be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take your role?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Policy, Ms. Smith?
Page six.
I had it, there it was.
It ran away, Brandon.
Yes, it did. Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through C be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Well, there comes just some discussion real quick. Our discussion is, I just want to thank the Policy Committee and, and David Rubin for, um, drafting the policy five seven two two one on the school yearbooks and, um, did a, a good job with the, uh, drafting that policy.
Role, Mrs. Secretary.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Curriculum, Mr. King?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through F be approved as presented.
Second.
All right, one second. Sorry, I just, um, am I in the right place? Yes. I just, when I was looking through, um, all of the, um, approved trips, I was happy to see that, um, that there's a lot more CBI or community-based instruction for our, um, for our life skills and that it's continuing, um, through the year. I think it's, it's great to shop right and Target, um, and, and what was this, the Beverly Sherr's Shroom Center?
Yeah, Kohl's, they do a lot, do a lot of work.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's incredible. It's the first time I think I've seen this.
Well, I think we do that every year, they just kind of pack them in the beginning of the school, like, eight years.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing the, the, I don't remember seeing at, at low, um, like, at a, at like a job. Like, community-based that way. So I think that, that, that is, um, a really, it's, it's important, a forward, a step, a forward step. So I just wanted to bring that to attention.
Thank you very much.
I remember last year I was actually in Staples, and I was wondering what was going on, and it actually was a group of students that were
Especially with their van.
Out there and working.
Yeah, it's really, it's important for the community to see them, right? So it's, and, and it's important to learn, um, you know, life skills and, you know, be out and working.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate it.
I see.
Sorry.
Role?
Yep.
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Um, public service, uh, Ms. Cordino?
Uh, be resolved that the following motion identified as items A through D be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary?
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Administrative and auxiliary, Mrs. Strachwick?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through E be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take your role?
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes to all abstain on F. I think we're all supposed to abstain on F.
We're only voting on A to E.
A, A through E.
A through E.
Mr. Paul.
Oh, you did it.
We separated already. You missed that memo, see?
Oh my God, you're too efficient.
We are all over it.
Uh, yes, then.
Yes.
Those motions carry.
Okay, now on to part two.
Yeah, Anika?
Oh, huh?
You're gonna have to do F now independently.
Oh, sorry, approval.
So... So, so before you, before you read, so you're going to approve everybody but your name?
Got it. So I'm going to read F?
Yep.
Approval of attendance of members and or employees of board at conferences where...
You can just read the be resolved right above it.
Be resolved.
Oh, be resolved that the following motion identified as items F be approved as presented.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
A second?
Oh, second it. Second it. Yeah, and then now we'll take the role and everybody abstaining from themselves.
Okay.
Ms. Stafford?
Abstain.
Yes, yes, to all.
Just for myself.
Yes to all except I know Ms. Stafford.
Oh, yes to all except for myself. I need to stop her, sorry.
How about we do this? Everybody, when you vote yes, I will mark you as abstaining from yourself.
There you go.
Do we all agree?
Now we've got the A, B, C's back in a row. We're it.
We keep improving every year.
Efficiency, efficiency, yes.
All right, so Mrs. Cordina?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes to all abstain from Mr. King.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mrs. Salgat O'Callaghan?
Yes to all abstain from Nancy Salgat O'Callaghan.
Ms. Smith?
Yes to all abstain from me, I'm not going.
Dr. Connors?
Uh, no to everybody, no. Yes to all abstain on Dr. Tom Connors.
And Ms. Cherry?
Abstain from Ms. Cherry and yes to the rest.
Hey, motion's carry.
All right. Old business. We got through that, see? You got a half out there, we got a little bumpy, but we got there. Yes, Dr. Connors?
Madam Chairman, I have, uh, a few items for old business. The first is to announce that the, um, first meal debt ad hoc committee will be meeting in this room at five-thirty on Monday, September twenty-third. The last New Jersey School Boards Association's Board Certification Training Session will be right after that at six-thirty PM here. And you will be getting a special agenda in the mail for that meeting.
Email.
Email for that meeting. The Board Certification Training does not end at that point. What I was told now, as you recall, one year ago, we had to do an annual board self-evaluation. So I will be working with our new field representative, Mary Ann Friedman. She will send me a link. It'll be very similar to what we did in the past. It'll link you to board, uh, school boards in New Jersey, New School, New Jersey site, and, um, you'll have to go through and do board self-evaluation. And then, um...
I'm sorry, the, the, the board, um... No, the, the presenter last time was different.
Patty, Patty, states shifted.
Yeah, but is, is that who's our new representative is going to be?
Our new representative is Mary Ann Friedman, and she's to be...
That's not who was here that time?
No, Patty.
Okay, that's my question.
The, the person that was here that, that you guys get a compliment to was actually a substitute for Patty.
Okay.
And, but that woman, um, I forget what her name was, she, she's a, a field representative like in Sussex County and a few other places, and she was available. There has been a formal change of our field representative is no longer Patty.
I see.
Um, it is now Mary Ann Friedman, who has worked with us in the past.
You might know her from our strategic planning, she was at our first meeting of strategic planning.
Okay, and I do, I do, I know who she is, and I, I feel like I remember her name was when I first started. She was our representative. I do remember the name. Okay, I see.
And, and the thing is that, um, I thought that we had already checked that box last year in the word self-evaluation, but then they threw that little word annual in. So since it's been a year, we have to do that. The good news, though, is that if we get through the next session, we get through that, and then there's some other small things. You know, before the end of the year, as a group, you know, we have four years to do it. As a group, we got it done in a little over, little over a year. So that's a good thing, and we'll, we'll get a certification, and, uh, it's, it's always great to, um, do continuous learning. And, uh, the next, well, okay, yeah, that was it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to lose your train of thought.
That's all right.
Was something else?
No, that was it, that was three things.
Okay.
That was it.
Uh, new business, I know Dr. Benelli has some stuff.
I do, I have four things. So, you know, Tom, I'm, I'm really bowing here for the, the new business, but I'm a lot...
Tom rubbing off on...
I'm a little faster, though. First thing, I'd like to thank Joe Toma, um, and his team for the support. Uh, Joe Toma is the president of the PTEA, and, um, you know, just his outlook on what a relationship should look like in, in a, in a district as large as ours, so thank you, your team, we really appreciate everything. We had a wonderful convocation, uh, welcoming the teachers back. So we really appreciate that relationship and, and all that you do, um, and, and keeping the train moving as well, so we thank you very much. A couple of logistical things, we have a football game scheduled for September twenty-seventh against South Brunswick. That is a Friday night. There is a Rutgers football game that same night, and we, uh, all the, the police officers in town will be working the Rutgers game. So we have rescheduled that game to Thursday, the night before, the twenty-sixth. And information will go out, uh, to the whole community, because we know it's a community event, um, so just to let you know there. Our Piscataway High School Experience, uh, was mentioned here somewhere, um... Typically is in January. A lot of times, people use the Piscataway High School Experience to make decisions. We know you have, uh, parents have decisions to make, and, you know, some, some people decide, well, you know, the magnet schools might be better, or, okay, I mean, a, uh, a Catholic school might be better, or a private school. We have decided to move our high school experience to October, uh, because a lot of those applications for those other places, and including the academies for us, um, need to be in by November first. So you'll, your kids in eighth grade will hear more about the Piscataway High School Experience in October, so you have time more to make decisions about, uh, you know, places that you want to go, courses that you might want to take, things like that. So we're excited, we're going to change the process a little bit, things like that. But I just want to get that information out as soon as, as soon as we knew that. And, uh, another change, which we think is, is good, and I was working with Joe Toma on this one, our, uh, our November parent-teacher conference. We wanted to try to make, uh, the access to parent involvement, it's actually one of our goals. Access to parent involvement, uh, easier for, for parents, especially with kids in multiple grades. So our parent-teacher conference is in November, not back-to-school night. But I know I'm saying it before back-to-school night, but this is in November. Our two-night evening, uh, parent-teacher conferences at the high school only will be starting at five o'clock instead of six. So you'll have some time slots from five to seven instead of six to eight. So if you can only do one night and you have kids in two different, three different schools, that gives you a little more leeway to get to those schools. So again, information that is for later on in the fall, but I wanted to get to you as soon as we could.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's, um, repeat the hours, what is...
Five to seven on the two nights, November twentieth and November twenty-first.
And it used to be six to eight?
Yep, just at the high school only.
Ah, okay.
All right, and there's still a virtual option, if you want to do it virtually, right? But it gives access to families who have, uh, kids in, in more, more than one school.
Okay, because they can make it to the younger grades.
They can make it to the high school and then go to the middle school and then go to the undergrads.
Because they have till eight o'clock to get to the other school.
Oh, okay, I was really confused.
Wait a minute, the train is not rolling here tonight.
I'm like, what is happening? I don't, I didn't understand how that worked, but, okay. I only have one kid in one school, so that's probably why I don't understand.
Um, and then Dr. Benelli's question.
Yeah.
When, that, that's all online through Genesis, that you've scheduled your conference.
Yep, for conferences, yeah.
Genesis closed for conferences, it was like a week ahead, correct?
Yeah.
Um, that, I know for me, um, I, I, it was my mistake that, um, I only scheduled a couple. Because in the past, you used to be only be able to do...
Be limited.
You were limited, right, to like your two cores or whatever it was, so...
In the, in the younger grades.
But I, I feel, I think even at high school, at high school, it used to be like that. I feel like it was, no. But I only, I didn't do enough, and then I was like, oh, I'll just go in.
And it was closed.
And it was closed, um...
So we close it for, and Bill Krip, if I'm wrong here, we close it so the teachers have...
Can prepare and print out, I understand.
Yeah, you know, like, you want to...
I, I, I understand. So I was just thinking, like, a week, maybe we could stretch it, you know, like, uh, you know, maybe not a little...
Not as much, five days.
Maybe five days.
Five days, okay, I'll talk to Chris, and, and, actually, Bill, Bill actually sets it up in the computer, so maybe we'll see, we'll talk about it.
Listen, I know teachers need time to prep, there's a lot to print, and you have, you know, you're preparing and writing notes on all your students, and, you know, if you have a hundred and thirty students, that's a lot of work to do. But I know on the parent end, um, and...
So there's only so many slots, is that what you're saying, right?
Exactly, yes, yes, but, but I mean, I know, like, like, there was teachers that had openings.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh, there's like openings, but I can't get, because I couldn't, like, get back in, and I was like, there's openings right now! Um, but logistically, it didn't work.
I have a suggestion for that also, then, before it closes, just a reminder, go out, like, hey, it's closing tomorrow.
So you're, you're taking my thoughts, I suppose.
Did you send that out?
No, no, a hundred percent.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I was going to say, parents need, like, we, we get, we get a lot of information. Um, so you, you can never not send enough reminders, especially with something where it's closing, and you were just, you were, you were on my next point right there.
You were thick.
Because, um, you know, the communication piece, so just making sure that, um...
You got it.
Give them that reminder.
Okay, thank you, I, that's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else with new business?
I just have one new business.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to make, make a, a, a note that the Culture, Climate and Community Relations Committee meeting got a schedule for September twenty-fourth. On our website, it currently says that it's virtual, it is not, it is in person in this room for anybody who wants to know. The people on the committee will get that notification, and the website will be updated. Thank you.
It was on Dr. Gray's, uh, dates.
But, but, I mean, in all the, in all the, like, public places, like, if anybody wanted a, a conference, it's not.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Gotcha, okay. Now I'm just going to sit here, we're all going to stare at each other. Now, let me quit joking around. Uh, have a motion for a German. Second. All in favor? We are German. Wow, Courtney!
Finish me.